Mr. Chairman, recording has begun.
All right, very good. This is John Mudd. I'm the acting chairman for tonight's Planning Commission meeting. Our regular chairman, Mike Gehan, is unavailable tonight. I'll also note that Dawn Banks is unable to attend tonight's meeting. What that leaves us with is Evelyn Bryant Ward, Tracy Johnson, and Greg Sampson are alternate, who will be in full service tonight. We still have a quorum, and therefore we will proceed with tonight's Planning Commission meeting. The first item, and I'll ask Councilwoman Ward if she would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Good evening, Chairman Mudd. Would you please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the March 1st, 2022 meeting. I assume all the present Planning Commission members have had a chance to review the minutes, and if so, is there a motion to consider adoption of those minutes?
Chairman Mudd?
Yes.
I move that we accept the March 1st, 2022 Planning Commission meeting minutes as presented.
All right, is there a second?
This is Gregory Sampson. I second the motion.
All right, thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, that sounds unanimous. I also vote aye. So that leads to the approval of the minutes for the March 1st meeting. The next item, under Matters of Review and Approval, is consideration of the Heritage Green Neighborhood O preliminary subdivision plan. And with that, I will turn it over to Janine Harrington for her presentation.
Good evening, Planning Commission members. For the Heritage Green preliminary plat for Neighborhood O, the applicant is D.R. Horton, and representative is Griffin Burns, and the engineer is Rogers Consulting Incorporated, with Chris Lazration as the representative there. The subject property is directly west of the existing AgroCopia subdivision located at Pollen Drive. The existing zoning for the property is TDX. The proposed use is residential, single-family dwellings. The property itself is around 29 acres. The proposed density for this piece is 7.06 dwelling units per acre, which brings the overall density for the entire Heritage Green development to date with Neighborhood K and Neighborhood O to 3.6 dwelling units per acre. To the north, we have a TDX, which is future Heritage Green development. To the south is Hickory Ridge residential subdivision. To the east, AgroCopia residential subdivision, and to the west, also TDX, future Heritage Green development. The applicant has submitted the application for the preliminary plat approval of Neighborhood O containing 68 single-family dwellings. As required by the town code, the approval of the preliminary plat shall constitute conditional approval of the subdivision, but shall not constitute approval of the final plat. Approval of the final plat shall be valid for not more than one year unless an extension is granted by the Planning Commission or if they proceed forward in accordance with the town code. So I won't go through all of the background, as we've seen this quite a bit, but I did provide a brief overview, a table, since August of 2020, when the property was purchased by D.R. Horton. Just to give you an overview, they are planning on phasing out the entire development into several different neighborhoods. And so there's A through Q, and they will be doing those in subsequent order as the development proceeds forward. And we have the site location map located on the screen, so you can see the location of Neighborhood O in context to the entire property. So the most recent submission was the preliminary plat for Neighborhood K, which was approved by the Planning Commission on August 4th of 2021 with conditions. So for the Neighborhood O, with 68 single-family dwellings, it is in accordance with the approved master site development plan, as there are no lot coverage, minimum lot area, lot widths, or setbacks required. However, the applicant is proposing to have 20-foot front setback, 25 rear setback, and five-foot side setbacks in this neighborhood. As we mentioned, the density is 7.06 dwelling units per acre, and the overall development as a whole, once it's completed, must meet the minimum density of 6.5 dwelling units per acre. And each individual neighborhood density will vary in order to achieve that goal. So from the code of the Town of Oplata for approval of findings, in Chapter 108-49, Preliminary Forest Conservation Plan, the preliminary forest conservation plan has been approved, and we will receive a final forest conservation plan with the final plat for this neighborhood. We have just received the final forest conservation plan for Neighborhood K. So the overall site is proposing to clear 577.41 acres of forest and retain 254.85 acres in permanent forest conservation easement. They will also be proposing off-site plantings or preservation and some reforestation on the site, and that will be determined with the final forest conservation review as to how much they will be doing on that site. Chapter 167, Stormwater Management, the project is being reviewed and approved in accordance with this section. This particular development is proposing submerged gravel wetlands and microbioretention. In accordance with the Stormwater Management Design Manual, the applicant must meet certain parameters through environmental site design, or as we call it, ESD, to the MEP. And the total ESD required for the site is 43,051 cubic feet, and they are providing 52,324 cubic feet. And just to assure that with the stormwater management ordinance, they do need to contain the water and treat it on the site, so it doesn't adversely affect any adjoining property owners. In accordance with Chapters 173-9 Streets, all proposed streets are being designed in compliance with the town code and in coordination with the Charles County Design Manual, which is what we are using by policy at this point, for road designs to ensure that the town roads and county roads line up properly once they connect. The site will have five secondary local roads, and the neighborhood will have primary access on Pollen Drive through AgroCopia. There will be future connections through Neighborhood N to the north, which will eventually connect to the Plata Parkway and a proposed connection to Radio Station Road, and we are still working through that connection with the Board of Education, since that will go through their property. The road names have been submitted to Charles County Addressing in order to proceed with creating individual addresses, and the site will also feature six-foot wide sidewalks and ADA-compliant ramps at intersections, in accordance with our master site development plan approval. To follow up on previous conversations about traffic impacts and the concerns that were voiced from not only the county, but from residents and with internal review, we are working very closely with Charles County government and the State Highway Administration to address any concerns on the traffic impact analysis. The town does not have an adequate public facilities manual or ordinance at this point. We are working on one, but in the meantime, we have agreed to utilize the Charles County's adequate public facilities ordinance with the creation of their traffic impact study. So as a condition of the approval of Neighborhood K on August 4th of 2021, the Planning Commission approved that preliminary plat with the condition that a traffic study be submitted with every preliminary plat moving forward for review and approval by the county. However, after recent discussions between the county, the state, the applicant, and the town, we did reach an agreement that noted that every single preliminary plat probably wasn't going to be delivering the data that we needed, or that would make a difference. So we've agreed to reach certain milestones for when the traffic impact study needs to be updated. So those milestones are set approximately every 750 dwelling units built or every three years, whichever is sooner. There will also be warrants in place to ensure that mitigation is constructed at each milestone. So in accordance with that previous condition of approval for preliminary plat K, they did submit a revised traffic impact study in January, and that has received its first round of comments from the county, the town, and the state. We are actually utilizing a consultant with Mead and Hunt to do our traffic impact study reviews. So we did send back comment letters, but they did meet the intention of that condition and submitted their traffic impact study with the submission of the preliminary plat for Neighborhood O. For Chapter 173-11, Dedication and Reservation of Parkland, the applicant has provided approximately 15.168 acres, as shown on the plats, open space parcels A through E, including a connection to the Nature Trail and Neighborhood K. The Nature Natural Trail starts at the Hiker Biker Trail along Little Plata Parkway, wraps around the southern and western boundary of Neighborhood K, where it will connect to Neighborhood O on the Folklore Way. As noted in the comprehensive plan, the connection will fulfill the action item of connecting the Heritage Green development to the park in AgroCopia. And in accordance with Town Code Section 191-33.D.9, the overall development is required to provide 25% of open space, including 5% as public use space. In Neighborhood O, the open space is equivalent to about 54% of the total land area, and the site is protecting floodplain, wetlands, streams, and steep slopes within the Clark's Run Waterway, within that open space preservation. For Chapter 173-18, Street Trees, street trees are being provided along the right-of-way in the designated planting strip. The town code would require approximately 77 trees, and they are providing about 82 trees throughout the development. They have several different species listed for consideration along the different road sections. These will be finalized with the final engineering plans with review. By policy, the town is looking to encourage native tree species wherever possible, so we have kind of set a minimum percentage of native species and not more than 5% of non-native species. And as shown on Sheet 3 of the planned sheet, the planting strips will be at least seven feet wide to accommodate the street trees and prevent interference with utilities. For water and sewer, all water and sewer connections are being provided in compliance with this section. Water and sewer capacity will be analyzed with the submission of engineering plans for each phase of construction. We have done an overall review to ensure that the water and sewer lines are being provided in compliance with the code, that the further details about the diameter and types of pipe will be determined at the engineering phase. When we look at our comprehensive plan, going through, it is in compliance with our land use goals and actions, as the site is zoned TDX, which is mixed use on our future land use map in the comprehensive plan. Goal number two, new development areas will reflect the principles of walkability, sustainability, and environmental protection. Again, they are providing the nature trails, sidewalks, parks, wetland restoration, different elements to meet this goal within the plan set. And I won't go through all of these, because I think we get a little repetitive with some of the items, but they are meeting the environmentally sensitive goals and actions through their protection of the floodplain, forest conservation, stream valley, those types of things. With our transportation goals and actions, as we note that the future connections for Neighborhood O will provide new connections, and the initial connection will be at Pollen Drive, but they will need to provide mitigation where needed, as instructed by the traffic impact study. So there will be multiple connections throughout the property in the future. Again, talking about sidewalks and the trail system to promote connectivity and walkability of the community. And then again, goal number 32, create a townwide walking biking trail system, and as we noted, that the trail will connect Heritage Green with the Clark's Run Greenway to the existing AgroCopia Park, which is action item number two in the comprehensive plan. So after having said all of that, staff is recommending approval of the Heritage Green Neighborhood O preliminary plat in accordance with Section 173-24 of the town code with the following condition. So this is an update to the previous condition placed on the Neighborhood K after our discussions with the county and the state. The condition is, the applicant shall submit updates to the traffic impact study for review and approval by the Charles County government, State Highway Administration, and town at certain milestones, as mutually agreed to. Each traffic impact study shall be developed in accordance with the Charles County APF Manual using the Development District Standards. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have of me, and we do have the applicants and representatives on the line if you have any questions of them.
Thank you, Janine. If there's any Planning Commission members who have questions, this is the time now for those. Once that's complete, I'm assuming the applicant will want to do a presentation?
No, not if not necessary. They're here to answer any questions that the Planning Commission may have. I believe that my staff report pretty much summed up the presentation.
All right, very good. Is there any questions from any of the members of the Planning Commission on the presentation for this item?
Chairman Mudd, I have no questions. This is Evelyn Bryant Ward.
All right, thank you. With that, it sounds like there's no questions from the board members. I do want to take about five minutes and talk to the board. As you may be aware, last week, I requested from staff copies of the newest traffic study done in January, as well as copies of the review letters from both the town and the State Highway Administration. Since receiving those important documents, I have reviewed them in detail, and wanted to spend just a few minutes for the benefit of the board to talk about what I think is the primary issue that we should be concerned with as this project proceeds, and that has to do with adverse traffic impacts. I will say that the traffic study is very complete, well-done, and has left no stone unturned, and that's essentially what I was hoping we could provide, or they could provide, last year. So I'm very pleased with the result of the traffic study, and as Janine has indicated, the reviews are continuing, both from the town, the county, and the State Highway Administration. I just wanted to highlight briefly a couple of items in the town's response letter, and I think these are key items that the commission needs to stay abreast of, be aware of, as we proceed with the project. And in the town's letter, very well-written, it notes that, "To date, the proppers have largely occurred through state highway regarding improvements to state roadways without regard to the town's multimodal transportation network. The town is particularly concerned with potentially adverse impacts of the Heritage Green development on local roads, especially Washington Avenue, Oplata Road, and Radio Station Road." Very well said. The Planning Department, in their letter, recommends the following, as a condition of approval for any further units in Neighborhoods I, J, and K, that the installation of a traffic signal at the intersection of Oplata Parkway and Maryland Route 6 should be completed. I'm not going to go through all of the recommendations, but really the ones that are most key, in my opinion. The second suggestion is that, or recommended condition, is that approval of Neighborhoods D, E, F, G, and H shall be conditioned upon connection being made to either Rosewood Road or to Washington Avenue via Heritage Green Parkway. Again, those are two important conditions, which I think can't get lost at this juncture, and need to be a priority item for the development of an agreement, which staff is recommending. Staff is asking that the applicant provide a package of improvements to mitigate adverse traffic impacts, to meet with the town staff as soon as possible. Once the package of improvements has been agreed to, it shall be memorialized in an agreement with the town, and I would suggest also with the county and the State Highway Administration. So it's a very good response letter from the town. I simply wanted to highlight several of the conditions, which I see as being very important. State Highway Administration's letter is very thorough and full, from all of their different review sections. Their real focus is on the one primary intersection, which is my biggest concern, which is at Charles Street, Willow Lane. And basically, the State Highway has indicated that, at the completion of Phase 1, or at any other time during build-out, when field conditions deem it necessary for this intersection, that the permittee shall be responsible for the design and construction of the traffic signal. So this traffic signal, I think, is, of all of the 21 intersections that have been studied, is probably one of the three most key intersections that we need to keep our focus on. In addition, State Highway indicates that, as part of mitigation for Phase 1, US Route 301 and Maryland Route 6, as well as 301 and Maryland 225, will fail during the PM peak, and mitigation should be constructed during the partial build-out of Phase 1. So again, those two intersections should be highlighted as requiring more immediate attention than in future phases. The state notes that there are multiple intersections with failing future levels of service, intersections 6 and 7 within full build-out, and the state asks that they consider mitigation of these intersections even though they will be unsignalized. So that really encapsulates what I see as some of the key issues that the State Highway Administration has focused on, and I think these need to be carried forward into the future. I'm going to wrap this up here real quick, so we can keep moving. But as you know, Heritage Green is proposing a total of 3,196 total dwelling units, and by all honesty, the Oplata Parkway from Rosewick connection at the north to the south at Route 6 and Willow Lane is really going to become a bypass of Oplata for some people. The three key intersections for me are, again, the northern intersection, Rosewood Road, access at the Oplata Parkway, the western connection of the Parkway with Heritage Green Parkway across the CX line, again, dependent on their approval of that, and finally, the southern terminus, which is the Charles Street, Route 6, Willow Lane connection. These are all failing intersections, even at partial build-out, and they will certainly be failing at a full build-out. The point being that the focus really has to be on those intersections early in the process, to ensure that, as this project develops, we don't worsen the traffic situations that presently exist within the town. The applicant's own traffic consultant indicated in their traffic signal warrant analysis that Intersection 10, again, the Route 6 Willow Lane connection, is warranted upon the completion of I, J, and K as part of the partial build-out, and they recommend a signal be provided prior or before partial build-out is completed. And lastly, Intersection 19 at Rosewick and Oplata Parkway, the applicant's engineer indicates that a signal is warranted with Neighborhoods A, B, and C, and they recommend doing that mitigation and that signal before completion of partial build-out. So that's my quick little synopsis for the board's purposes and consideration. It's a great project, it's a huge project, but as everyone understands, it can and will have immense impacts on surrounding traffic unless mitigation can be provided in terms of signals and other intersection improvements, which will lessen the impact of this project on the Town of Oplata. The final thing I'll say is that staff, again, recommended a mitigation agreement that's very consistent with any APF type of activities, particularly with a project of this large, and I strongly encourage the staff, in concert with the county and the state, to work towards that document sooner than later. This commission will be continuing to consider other sections and final plats for this project, and again, I think that milestone of creating this mitigation agreement, so everyone understands what the improvements will be and when they will occur, is crucial at this point, at least for my personal comfort level, and should be for the comfort level of this Planning Commission and the town. So with that, I'll step off my pulpit and move forward now for the board's consideration of approval for Neighborhood O as presented tonight.
Chairman Mudd?
Yes, ma'am.
This is Councilwoman Bryant Ward. I move to approve the Heritage Green Neighborhood O preliminary plat as presented, with the conditions that the applicant shall submit updates to the traffic impact study for review and approval by Charles County government, the State Highway Administration, and the town at certain milestones, as mutually agreed to. Each traffic impact study shall be developed in accordance with the Charles County Adequate Public Facilities Manual using the Development District Standards.
All right, thank you for that. Is there a second?
Chairman Mudd, this is Greg Sampson. I second that motion.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, the motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, please designate by saying yes, or aye.
Aye.
Yes.
I also vote yes, so therefore, the motion is approved and passes, and therefore, Neighborhood O preliminary plan of subdivision for Heritage Green is now therefore approved. Moving on to the next item, Item 4, again, Matters of Review and Recommendation, is the Hub Annexation Petition. I have a few comments before we begin this. As everyone should recall, the record was held open for this project from the March 1st Planning Commission public hearing. We did receive public comments during that open record period, and those have been attached to the agenda, and hopefully, everyone's had a chance to review those. These comments will be forwarded to the Town Council for consideration at the Town Council public hearing, which will happen at a later date. Therefore, we will now then close the official record related to the Hub Annexation Petition public hearing. Staff, Janine, I guess you want to have an overview at this point?
I'll just quickly, you summarized very well, thank you for that. So just a overview of what we had looked at on March 1st. It's the annexation petition with a Planning Commission recommendation on the zoning designation and compliance with the 2020 comprehensive plan. As noted, the applicant is requesting the TDX zoning for this property, for the hub, and that is, per the staff report, the most appropriate use for the property in accordance with the 2020 comprehensive plan, since the property was shown as a mixed-use property on the future land use map, and in accordance with their concept development. And I do want to stress the importance of an annexation is not approving the development that's being shown. The concept site plan is just to give us an idea of what could potentially be developed on the property, so I just want to make sure that everyone's aware that we are not approving the development at this stage, and that is why we are no longer doing public hearings at the Planning Commission portion. Really, it's the Town Council that will review and approve the annexation petition, and that really the only act of the annexation is to bring it into the town to be developed under town codes, my apologies. Otherwise, the property could be developed under Charles County zoning regulations outside the town boundary. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, that we are not approving any of the development at this stage, and the Planning Commission is simply making a recommendation on the proposed TDX zoning category in compliance with the 2020 comprehensive plan. And so with that, I would give it back to the Planning Commission to, if you have any questions of myself or of the applicant, or you can proceed with your recommendation.
All right, thank you, Janine, for those clarifications. Members of the board, are there any questions at this point?
I have no questions. This is Councilwoman Bryant Ward. I think we've talked about this, and it was made pretty clear the last council meeting.
Yes, ma'am, you're correct. Any other members have any questions?
This is Tracy Johnson. I don't have any questions.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, then, I will ask to see if there's a motion from the commission to consider approving a recommendation of approval for the zoning proposed for the annexation, as well as consistency- annexation as well as consistency with the comprehensive plan. Do we have a motion?
Chairman Mudd, this is Councilwoman Bryant Ward. I move to recommend approval of the TDX zoning designation request in accordance with the 2020 comprehensive plan.
All right, thank you for that. Is there a second?
This is Tracy, I second that.
All right, thank you for that. All right, being properly motion made and seconded, please, all in favor, say by, answer by saying yes or no.
Yes.
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 I vote no. So it passes three to one, and this project is now destined to proceed to the town council for their steps in the process. Thank you very much for that. The next item on the agenda, 4.2, is the Hawthorne Yards annexation petition. Again, as Janine had indicated previously, the planning commission is no longer going to be holding public hearings on annexation petitions, but simply will be considering consistency of the zone and consistency with the comprehensive plan. Therefore, there is no public hearing associated with this petition tonight. And with that, I will turn it over to Janine for your initial presentation.
Thank you, Chairman Mudd. So for the Hawthorne Yards annexation petition, again, looking for the zoning recommendation on the designation requested, the property is owned by Hawthorne Development LLC. The authorized agent is Stephen Scott with the Scott Law Group LLC. The existing Charles County zoning is rural residential and community commercial. It's a split-zone property since it takes up a few parcels. Mayor proposing neighborhood commercial mixed-use or NCX zone, which is a lower-scale mixed-use zone. It is currently vacant besides the existing ball fields that are on the property. They are proposing mixed-use with different types of single-family townhomes and some commercial. The property is approximately 53.2274 acres. To the north is rural residential, or what would be the hub. To the south is rural residential and R-21. So there is some Charles County properties and the Quailwood property, or Quailwood subdivision. To the east is rural residential and R-21, again, some Charles County residential properties and the Jamestown subdivision. And to the west is rural conservation within Charles County. So the applicant submitted an application for an annexation petition on June 17, 2020, an updated one, to incorporate the lands referenced above into the municipal town boundary. The council reviewed the petition at their August 16, 2021 work sessions and provided a consensus to proceed forward with the annexation review. On March 1, we were going to bring this before the planning commission, and we were informed that we had an outdated concept plan attached to the agenda meeting packet. In order to ensure the corrected concept plan was added to the record, we did take this back to the town council at their March 15, 2020 work session, and again, received consensus to proceed forward with the planning commission recommendation. So the concept development that could be proposed for the site is a mixed-use community with 58 townhomes, 142 single-family dwellings, and pad sites for approximately 32,000 square feet of commercial space fronting on Hawthorne Road. The project will incorporate open space and recreation amenities, including a clubhouse, pickleball courts, and they will be providing screening and buffer yards in accordance with the town code along the existing subdivisions to the south and to the east. Access to the site will be provided on Hawthorne Road and along Quailwood Parkway per the site plan that's shown on the screen right now, and they are requesting the neighborhood commercial mixed-use NCX zone be applied to this development. Staff has provided a brief comprehensive plan compliance analysis as a separate document. The project is proposing the NCX zone, which is in compliance with the 2020 comprehensive plan as the site is shown with the, on the future land use map as a mixed-use property. Therefore, staff finds that the NCX zone is the most appropriate zoning designation based on the acreage of the property. And from that, I will turn it over to the planning commission. The applicant can provide a brief presentation overview if you have anything additional to add to that, and then we can take it back to the planning commission for your review and recommendation.
All right, Janine, you want to now proceed with the applicant?
Yes, if, Mr. Scott, do you have anything to add to that or any additional words to?
Director Harrington, I thought you did a wonderful job. We're happy to provide an overview of the land use, of course, which would be the effort this evening, which would be consistent with the planning commission's role being to recommend a zoning category to the town council. Alternatively, we're happy to answer any questions the planning commission might have. Whatever the planning commission's pleasure is, we certainly don't want to prolong the meeting. We think the NCX zone is the most logical choice when one reviews the comprehensive land use plan and the zoning ordinance, and we believe that it fits well with this particular land use concept and this particular situation and this location. So at the pleasure of the planning commission, we can walk through the land use concept or we can simply answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. To the members of the planning commission, is there further detail or highlights or questions you have of the applicant that you may have at this time?
I don't have any questions.
All right. Well, from the sounds of it, it doesn't appear, Mr. Scott, that you're going to need to continue to give us more details. So that's a good thing, we appreciate that.
Thank you, Chair.
All right, well, if there's no further questions on this petition, I will ask the planning commission to consider a motion seeking to approve the zoning proposed for this annexation as well as the consistency finding with the comprehensive plan. Is there a motion?
Chairman Mudd, this is Councilwoman Bryant Ward. I move to recommend approval of the NCX zoning designation request in accordance with the 2020 comprehensive plan.
All right, thank you for that. Is there a second?
Chairman Mudd, Gregory Sampson, I second the motion.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sampson. With it now being properly motion made and seconded, all in favor, please say yes.
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 All right, I will abstain. Therefore, it'll be a three to one vote in favor of this annexation petition, finding that the project does propose proper zoning and is consistent with the comp plan for La Plata. And therefore, the recommendation made tonight will be forwarded to the town council for their consideration in their future public hearing related to this annexation petition.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair and planning commission.
All right, thank you. That moves us on down to item number five, and that's matters of information, and it's a planning department project update. So Janine, you're up.
All right. So for our planning department updates, upcoming projects, Town Homes of Potomac Square is a major subdivision. This was annexed into the town in 2019, and so they are working on their preliminary plat at this moment that is currently going through staff review before we take this to the planning commission for review and approval. Heritage Green, I believe the next parcel that they're looking at developing is parcel A. I think we're still a little ways off, but that would be the next one in line as far as I'm aware. I will be bringing forward the 2021 annual report, hopefully, next month. If not, definitely by the June meeting because we do need to have that submitted by July. And I'm also working through several different sections of code updates, and you can see that those are future topics of discussion for the planning commission as they affect Chapter 191, which is the zoning code, including sign code standards, parking standards. We've looked at noticing that there's some issues with the town's zoning, residential zoning categories in line with the state's smart growth policies and priority funding designation area. We're finding that single lot annexations for failed septic and water are not meeting the priority funding area designation and therefore are not qualified for the bay restoration funding that can be provided through the health department in order to help them to connect to water and sewer. So that is certainly problematic moving forward as people start to have failing wells and septics around the boundary of the town. We are working on the adequate public facilities ordinance, and we'll be working closely with our legal team on this to ensure that we are creating a adequate public facilities ordinance to address water, sewer, roads, school seats, as we've indicated previously, and then a form-based code for the downtown sustainable community. I'm actually working on the sustainable community renewal application, and I will bring that forward to the planning commission so you can see that area and what we're proposing once we get to that stage of the code. For new business updates, just so that everyone stays up to speed on what we've been doing, 234 Rosewood Road, we issued an occupancy permit for Salcedo's Grill. I don't believe they're open just yet, but they are finishing up with that. 115A La Grange Avenue, Joyful Studio LLC has opened, and I believe that they have a proposed event coming up. 118 La Grange Avenue, Faith First Health Clinic, again, they're not quite open yet, but it's right next door to the town hall. 118 Howard Street, Suite 104 Superior Structures is now occupying that space, and 9375 Chesapeake Street, Suite 111 Miracle Ear is moving into that space. For matters of information, as we indicated that we're going to be updating our annexation procedures and creating a handbook, that will be, that's currently under review by the town attorney before we proceed forward with releasing that for the public and for internal staff to utilize during annexation review. I'm working with our operations department. We've done some development projections, and looking at water and sewer is going to be very important, a part of those development projections. So not only taking into consideration school seats, but also how we're going to provide water and sewer. Our urban tree canopy study is underway and is actually pretty much complete at this point. There is a link in here where you can actually click on that and see what they've inventoried. You can see the status of the trees and what we have as far as street trees in the town. So it's a very neat software. I encourage everyone to take a look and see what they've, what they've shown throughout their inventory. I do have an administrative mapping correction, which is attached as well. I'll get to that once we finish with this. We've done development updates page on our website, and I'm posting them on Facebook along with any monthly meeting schedules and notifications. And as I mentioned before, I'm still trying to get to our draft code revisions, and it kind of goes throughout the board. It's going to be their subdivision chapter, streets and sidewalks, health and sanitation, chapter zoning code. We're really trying to look and make sure that we are having the most sensible and updated regulations as we move forward, so that's what we're looking at there. And then I will jump to the La Grange property memo that's also attached to the agenda. It was brought to our attention that there was a property located off of Port Tobacco Road. It's owned by the La Grange Property LLC, and on the tax maps, the property boundaries were incorrect. So it wasn't a mapping error per se, it was just that the tax maps were not correct. So after discussing with the State Department of Assessments and Taxation, as well as Charles County and the applicant, and then verifying with the town attorney, since it was a tax map error, it does not need to go through public hearing and do an official zoning map update. But I do want to bring it to your attention, I will bring it to the town council's attention, to note that we are correcting this boundary error that is shown on the, on the screen right here. So we had taken a look at the boundary survey that had been done for the La Grange property, and we also looked at a site plan from the Charles County Detention Center that was recently done, and based on deed descriptions, did indeed find that it was incorrect. So we're fixing the boundary and just adjusting the zoning layer to follow those property boundaries as they should. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, but I just wanted to bring this to your attention, that we are fixing the map and zoning layers to correct this error. With that, if you have any questions with me, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, if there's no questions then, and that completes Janine, all of your presentations there, then I'll ask Councilwoman Ward if she could provide a council update for the board at this time.
Thank you, Chairman Mudd. I don't really have any updates, but I would like to encourage everyone to go out to the farmer's market, it's now open, and to review the video commemorating the 20th anniversary of the tornado. I think everyone did an amazing job, so if you haven't had an opportunity to review it, certainly do.
All right, thank you very much for that. Director Harrington, item six, where you have future agenda items, have you already covered those or do you need to cover those next?
No, I covered that with my updates. Those are just noting the sections of the Chapter 191 that we will be bringing forward at a future date for the planning commission's review and discussion.
All right, thank you for that. All right, is there any additional business or issues or questions the board has at this time? If not, again, I enjoyed tonight and thought we had a successful meeting. Again, my earlier comments were not intended to pontificate on the issue related to Heritage Green, but my point is for this board to become further engaged in what are really the critical issues that confront this board in our future decisions in approving continuing sections of Heritage Green, and that is to keep a close eye on the provision of traffic mitigation in the form of signals and intersection improvements that are really crucial for this project to be successfully ingrained into the town of La Plata. So again, I'd ask the planning commission to continue to think of these items as we present future sections, and I encourage staff to work closely and soon with the applicant to finalize some form of a mitigation agreement, which I would like to see, I think the planning commission should see that. It'll only help us in our future considerations for this project. And with that, that's all I have to say. If there's no other questions or comments, I'll note that this here, this meeting is now adjourned, and we thank everybody, and we'll look to see everyone next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.